I'd like to call the meeting to order if we can, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amon.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken. Vagerly.
DeBleek.
Here.
Seven present, two absent.
Would we all please stand as we say the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing done, we will move into the consent items. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent items. Do we have any discussion?
One question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
On the municipal utilities, minutes, not on the minutes itself, but as far as getting a message to relays on Bruce, I've had some people call me regarding fluoride, fluoride in water, and they're finding out that there's some negative impacts on that in the communities. And I'm not sure what our state requires us to have. I think it may be mandated by state statute, and I'm not sure, but if you could find out for me, I'd appreciate it so I can respond.
We will. Maybe we have an answer. Bruce, do you have it?
I, like Councilmember Amon, do not know that answer. Maybe we can check with Wes to see.
We'll check with Wes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Respond to it.
All those in favor of the consent items as written, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll move into the Wilmer City Council Open Forum. Mr. Score. Will you please address the microphone and your name and address, please?
Bob Score, 617 Southwest 14th Street, Wilmer. Mayor and councilmembers, just one quick question again, just to update myself here. After cleaning my rain gauge of three and a half inches of water, I'm still curious to know where we're sitting on auditorium water issue on the roof and the gutters. Again, I'm not speaking anything in the basement, no gun range, anything. Have we got that problem to weather so we don't have to worry about it yet? Or are the bids not have been let yet, or where are we sitting on that?
I think, Mr. Mayor, it'd be easier if I just addressed that all under a July 9.
Okay. Thank you. Is that the only question that you have, sir? Thank you. That'll be good enough. We'll move into the community development report for May 29, 2014. Councilman DeBleek, filling in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Meeting was called to order on May 29, 4:45. Public comments, there was none. Consideration of building permit fee schedule, we need to discuss a proposal to increase the building permit fees to more accurately reflect the cost of providing the services. It was noted that the city is operating with a fee schedule from the 1994 Uniform Building Code. We debated whether building inspection should be a service that the city provides or if the cost should be covered by those who use that service. Building permit fees, you know, that's considered to be a user fee. Staff had done some rough cost estimating to break down the true cost of providing the service. As a number of the departments within the city are involved in the process of building permits, staff was asked to bring additional information back to the community and break down the cost of providing the service and showing the impact of fee increases on different levels of construction value. It was suggested that now may not be the right time to increase the fees and look for staff to bring back additional information to a future community development meeting. Item number four, which also was for consideration and information only, the staff presented draft goals and objectives for the Highway 12 corridor study as prepared by the technical advisory committee. The study is intended to provide a framework to guide future land use and transportation decision making within that corridor. It is not intended to be an engineering plan with specific design guidelines. After the committee reviewed the goals and objectives, we were satisfied that the study would adequately address the city's long-term needs. Item number five, the formal rural tire building demolition. Demolition of the formal rural tire building, we received a low quote for the demolition of that building of $48,500, which was submitted by M-A-A-C of Montevideo. They have the available staff and would like to pursue the project in the very near future. A funding source was identified. Staff was requesting that the funds that had been approved for the airport capital improvement be reallocated to cover the cost of the demolition. The state of Minnesota for 2014 did not approve the terminal irrigation or the planned design for airport fencing. Those two items totaled $54,000 in the capital improvement dollars. After discussion, the committee made a motion which passed to approve the low quote from M-A-C-C in the amount of $48,500 to fund the demolition with the reallocation of the capital improvement dollars for that purpose. Now I'll introduce that motion. Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, to introduce the demolition of the former rural tire building to the tune of $48,500 submitted by the M-A-A-C of Montevideo. Is there any questions? Is there any discussion? Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As far as development of that project or that area, Bruce, is there any interest? There was no interest from people purchasing that property. If I remember, prior to us taking over possession of that property, right, there was nobody that had any interest in that land lot. And what was the appraised value, if you could just refresh my memory, of that property?
I'll try to recall the appraised value. I think it was on the books at, on the assessor's books, for about $75,000 or $80,000. We did have some interest in the property, though no one wanted to pay the market price. And as a municipality, depending upon who we sell it to and how we sell it, we're obligated to try to get the best price possible. And I would imagine, once the buildings are out of there and people can see the site in a cleared condition, we'll begin to get some interest.
All right. Thank you.
Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Taking the $48,000 out of the $54,000 from the airport, that undoubtedly will have to go back into the capital improvement plan for that same project for 15, is that correct?
The airport projects? Yes. I mean, we would propose them again probably for the 15 projects, but they weren't approved by MINDOT for this year, so they weren't going to be, it's usually a shared funding, so we weren't going to pursue them without the shared funding.
Right. But, I mean, it's not going to go away.
It's not, it would not go away.
We'll have to spend the money in 15.
Yeah, we would look at doing those projects in another year.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Stevens, on the next later item on the agenda here, we have the auditorium and the contract with, post-contract with Engen and Associates. We were talking about some big dollars in their report. We haven't seen where those are coming from yet, and so I guess my question on the, you know, I'm assuming that if, you know, we're going to spend the $48,000 to demolish the rural tire property.
We are going to be using funds for the capital, from the capital funds also for those, for that project, for the auditorium. The council also gave us direction at looking at the insurance deductible and lowering that to allocate dollars for that, and also the public investment revolving fund as well is what we're looking at for that. I mean, the difficulty here, I think, is we've got some buildings that are in a pretty hazardous condition and that we have the responsibility and liability of, and we feel we need to take them down.
Yeah, I understand that. I just want to make sure that what we're going to talk about later, that we don't have any major issues with funding.
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. We have the consideration of the contract with Engen Associates.
Item number six on the agenda was, we discussed old business. There was an update on the former airport and the land release process that was provided by staff. Item seven, the committee inquired about the progress of several projects within the community, including Taco Bell's, Hardee's, Bethesda, Aldi, and Advantage Auto. There was no further business before the committee, and we adjourned at 5:40. And I'll do some motion to file these minutes.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, to file the minutes of the community development report for May 29, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. And now we move into the consideration of the contract with Engen Associates. Kevin, would you want to speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you the contract with Engen and Associates for the professional services for the city auditorium hazard abatement and building improvement project. The contract for services is broken down into four parts. City auditorium design development at $16,000, construction documents at $20,000, bidding and negotiating at $2,500, and construction administration at $5,500. As you can see in those breakdowns, they did not have anything for the environmental review and environmental cleanup. As noted in the master plan, they were working to locate an environmental consultant who would do that work. That was addressed, and Engen and Associates have been working in good faith, without a contract, to locate environmental consultants who would be willing to come out for this project, have time for it during the summer. They scheduled reviews of the auditorium, and they have located a firm, Midwest Environmental Consulting, to do that part, which they stated in the master plan they would not be doing. So, and to tie everything in with Mr. Score's request, I guess, we've been working on those contracts, and development, of course, of the specifications by Mr. Engen is somewhat dependent upon the decision of the environmental consultant to pull out some contaminated duct work or clean it, because that consultant firm getting that, those bids solicited would only be doing demolition and not putting it back. But they can all fold in together fairly well. And I sent an email this morning to the council to kind of clarify the issue of the gutters and the water concerns. But Engen has been developing plans, that was part of it all along, to make that as a detailed bid for the gutter work and the tuck pointing. They coordinated a bucket truck review up at, I don't know how tall it is, 35 feet up in the air. They have come to the conclusion that the gutter work is not as problematic as they initially thought. They're anticipating lining it and not even replacing most of the woodwork behind it. They think with proper cleaning, priming, and painting, that that historic woodwork will probably stay there. They'll be finalizing those bids, and it'll be part of the overall package. Tuck pointing, of course, is one of the problems, because it's been wearing away some of the mortar, so I guess that technically is still ongoing. But hopefully, these all will be resolved in a couple of months' time here. The reason the gutter work has not gone out on its own bid is that specs are underway with Engen, and there's also not a source identified through the maintenance funds. We just don't maintain those type of funds for standard annual maintenance. And so when we bid it, you'll have to base that alternate bid along with the total cost of removal and all the other items that were listed in the master plan that were authorized by the council. This, of course, contract has been put together with Mr. Engen. Robert Scott and Mr. Engen had a few issues to deal with on the contract, and they finally resolved them all, so we have that before you now to continue with this. And they will be working in concert with Midwest Environmental Consultants, LLC, to carry out the cleanup and subsequently bid out the improvements as listed in that master plan. So having said all that, Mr. Mayor, it is staff's recommendation that we accept this contract and authorize the mayor and the city administrator to sign on it and continue with the project going. But we have really not lost any time by not signing this a little earlier.
Do we have a total amount?
This contract is $44,000. The M-E-C contract, which is really under the threshold that the city administrator can deal with, is a smaller contract of about $12,000. And to remind you that the budget has been listed at $250,000, put in last year in the budget. The additional funds were identified of some options by the finance committee, but no details have been finalized pending actual dollar amounts. But there's enough money in this current year budget to cover these two contracts.
But the estimated total project cost is, based upon the preliminary stays of Engen, is approximately $0.5 million.
Okay, thank you. Would you read to us again what the motion is?
This is staff's recommendation, nobody's made it yet, Mr. Mayor, but to authorize the mayor and the city administrator to enter into contract with Engen and Associates for the stated amount of $44,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, to approve the motion made by Kevin Halliday. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, discussion.
Well, just a couple of questions. A question for Robert Scott, our attorney. When we're involved in projects, we're guided by some state statutes as far as the amount or percentage. If it exceeds X amount of dollars, we have to put it out on public bids. I know we do that in the construction phase and the designing phase or engineering phase or architectural phase. Are we also required to put that out on RFPs for a project of this size, or is it under the guidelines or below the guidelines?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Amon, this is a professional services contract, and the competitive bidding laws that you deal with on construction contracts don't apply to these kinds of services. So you can go through an RFP process, but it's not a requirement of law, and entering into direct negotiation with the consultant is also permissible.
So this is separate from the construction bidding process, RFPs? In the future, though, we do have other architects in town. We could put RFPs out, could we not?
Anytime you're thinking of contracting with a consultant, you could certainly do an RFP, yep.
Okay. I'm happy with the services of Engen. I just think if there's other people in town that are willing to do the work or interested, we maybe could put out RFPs.
And I think, Councilman Amon, we typically would have done that. In this case, we did not, because they had done the initial study and the phase and in the interest of kind of keeping it moving, and they already had the knowledge of the building and such, that we did not choose to do an RFP. But typically, we would seek other proposals as well.
This isn't a large project, you know, so it's, but in the future. Just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, as far as the services of Engen for the lead abatement, then, that would be an additional fee on top of this, correct?
That is a subcontract, and that is a separate contract for approximately $12,000. So the total kind of, there's $44,000 in contracts, in a contract with Engen, and there was a separate $12,000 contract.
So there may be another $12,000 in addition to this for services?
For services, yes, for design services and preparation.
So we're looking at $66,000 approximately?
So, yes.
Okay.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, I'm sorry.
Now it's getting larger, see my point? Anyway, thank you.
Did you have a question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I was looking for a timeline in here, and I don't see one. Is there some scheduled? You said we're not going to lose any time here with this late.
Well, we haven't lost any time between working on the location of an environmental consultant and discussing with that and getting those contracts from the past. We asked Mr. Engen, or staff, anyway, for that timeframe, and we do not have it in our hands yet. It is based a little bit about, with a conversation with M-E-C, so that that firm can maybe give some direction of when they think they can have the cleanup. None of the construction from Mr. Engen can begin until there's a complete sign-off from Midwest Environmental Consultant, Greg Meyer, who's the individual, to say it's okay to go in there and reconstruct after the destruction has taken place. But I think they will be in concert even throughout this week and come with a timeframe by the next council meeting that we'll know where we're at.
Do we have a deadline? I mean, is it going to be completed by November?
Our deadline, I think, was to get Gun Club up and running by about November 1st.
Okay, and that still holds, I'm assuming?
Still holds.
Another question, is Engen acting as a general contractor, then? Is that what they're doing? They're going to bid out everything, or?
No, not as a general contractor. They will bid that out to a general contractor, but it will not be the same contractor as the environmental cleanup contractor.
Speaking of the cleanup, you know, we've been able to use the auditorium this whole Does that need to be cleaned also? I mean, evidently, it's.
The whole auditorium would be cleaned in this bid. There's lead dust on the third floor. Oh, another opportunity to say. Inside of the Midwest Environmental Consultant contract, only for about $1,000, is actual checking for asbestos. Engen and Associates' master study identified about four areas of potential asbestos. The nine-by-nine inch tile is almost a giveaway, because it's a 1930 tile. The glue in that, some of the glue in the ceiling tiles, you've seen the wrap around pipes. They're going to actually take some of that and put it in the lab and test it, and then let you know. And if you recall, the law's still the same as it has been the last 20 years. You don't have to take it out, it's your determination. You have to maintain it in good shape. And if that pipe wrap comes off, you're going to have to recase it maybe with the stuff that they might use for putting on a plaster cast or whatever to keep it maintained. That's just a decision you'll make when you finally get that information. That generally is expensive also. So those are options when it comes. But all in all, I guess the project is on track. We still have that focused timeframe, hopefully, of November 1, where we can get it back and up and operational.
Is there anything here of not to exceed amounts? I mean, construction documents, $20,000, you know, they got four bullet points there. Are we going to be assured that it's not going to exceed that, or?
Well, it's in the detail of the back area. The last contract, they did the same thing. Remember, the master plan was $9,600, and that was exactly the billing.
Well, we need to move on with this and get it done. I think some of these numbers are high, but we need to get rolling on it. Yeah.
Is there any further discussion?
Mayor Yanis.
Go ahead.
You had your hand up first, Councilmember Nelson. Go ahead.
I was just curious if we had an initial, if we had been given an initial amount. Everybody's kind of thinking this is high, but did we actually have an initial amount to judge this by?
We did not.
I'm trying to remember. We did not, did we?
We did not.
Okay.
Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Question for our city attorney. I was, when I was reading Exhibit 3 attached to this agreement with, the contract with Engen and Associates, it provides that if there was any excesses on the 44, you know, if the billing went over, any of the part of it went, it's divided into parts, and if any part goes over the given amounts, so that they exceed, which would then affect the total of $44,000, that they wouldn't proceed or without getting authorization and writing from the city administrator. There's nothing with respect to amounts, only excess. I was going to check on that, but decided that's above my pay grade. I just ask you, what are the statutory limitations, or what amounts would require to come back to the council, for example?
I don't know that you're going to find a specific dollar amount. I think anything that would be judged to be material would need to come back to council for approval. The whole idea for the contract is, you know, you have the scope of services set out in Exhibit 1, and then the specific fees that are going to be paid is Exhibit 3. This is a flat-fee contract. These aren't just estimates for the contractor, excuse me, the consultant is going to try and stick to this number. This is a contracted fee amount that the council's approving. So in my judgment, anything materially changing that these terms would have to come.
I don't anticipate any. I just have a question, though. It's kind of, that provision is open-ended. It reads, unless such charges in excess of the maximum price, which would be $44,000, are authorized in writing by the city administrator before they are incurred by the city. So in other words, there's a provision in there that they would have to come back to the city administrator, but I was just curious if any certain dollar amounts would trigger that it would have to come before the council. I wouldn't anticipate any. I agree with your analysis, but I just thought I'd ask the question.
Yeah, and that would be something we'd advise the city administrator on if there were a inquiry made by the consultant about needing to be paid more for something that was unexpected. I don't know. My guess is it would be something like 5% if it was more than that. I think we'd recommend that the city council would need to approve it, because that would seem too material.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Is there any further discussion? Do we do a roll call on that, Kevin?
Yes, sir.
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amon.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Consideration of the preliminary plat for Harmar Foods Edition. Mr. Peterson?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, the plat you see tonight is a little bit different from the plat that you would typically see. Typically, in a plat, we see all of the lots having public street frontage. In this particular case, we had two buildings built on a parcel that were under single ownership. Subsequently, the new owners wished to subdivide the property, and the only way to do that is to use a part of subdivision law that deals with a plat called a common interest community. You'll note that there is Lot 1 and Lot 2, and they both have access to their properties from Outlet A. And so there are declarations and covenants included with this plat that provide for perpetual access to both parcels from Outlet A, and it also deals with maintenance and use of Outlet A. So it's a little bit different than we typically see, but we have done a number of them in the past. Midwest Technology Campus is a good example of a common interest community. The planning commission has approved the preliminary plat, and it's a recommendation of staff that the council likewise approve the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made. And second, to approve the preliminary plat of the Harmar Foods Edition. All those in favor say aye?
Mr. Mayor?
I'll go ahead, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where's the storm retention pond?
There is not one on this site. It does not meet the requirement size-wise to have stormwater retention, plus the site was developed prior to the city adopting its stormwater ordinance. So this property is part of the overall city stormwater system, and it has a number of catch basins in the parking lot that go to our storm sewer system. And from a practical standpoint, because this entire site is curbed, the curbed area is lower than the street, and it does serve as a retention basin in and of itself. So in a heavy rain, it would not be uncommon to get two, three, four inches of rain in this parking lot, and then as the storm sewer system meters itself out, the parking lot will drain.
Does that apply with our current policy? I know we revised our commercial stormwater retention policy years ago, does that still apply, or are we being different on this one, or is?
This site is still less than one acre, so our current site, or our current policy would apply the same way. We encourage people to do different things to minimize the impact of stormwater, whether they would have previous surface, temporary holding areas, whatever, but in this particular case, it's, the site is not large enough to trigger those requirements.
Okay, as long as we're treating everybody the same. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries, thank you. Consideration of the City Park Special Event by On Sale Liquor Licenseholder Baker's Creek Eatery, Doing Business as the Oaks at Eagle Creek, Wilmer Fest Incorporated at the Beach Party of Robins Island. Kevin, would you like to speak to us about that, please?
Mary Yanisch, members of the council, you have before you a special event permit for the Wilmer Fest activity, who will be planning and holding a beach party at Robins Island on June twenty-first, that's Saturday. They will serve the full array of alcoholic beverages by using the state on-sale liquor caterer, which is Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery, LLC. The Community Ed and Recreation Board met on Friday to review this application and has approved the permit. It is staff's recommendation that the council approve the permit for that event, and that would be in alcohol, so it's on a roll call vote.
I'll move to approve the staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the staff's recommendation of the City Park Special Event by On Sale Liquor Licenseholder Baker's Creek Eatery, LLC, Doing Business as the Oaks at Eagle Creek, contingent upon Community Education and Recreation Board Approval. Is there any discussion? I would like to go on record as saying that I am opposed to this, simply because I believe that the Wilmer Fest is a children's operation, and it's children, is for the young people to attend, and mostly, the queen candidates are, are young people, and enough said, I We have a? It's a roll call. A roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. And Kevin, the next one, the consideration of the City Park Special Event by On Sale Liquor Licenseholder Baker's Creek Eatery, Doing Business as the Oaks at Creek's Wilmer Stingers Jimmy Buffett Margaritaville Night. Would you like to tell us about that, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is a repeat activity, so apparently, it was successful last year, where the Wilmer Stingers hold a Jimmy Buffett Margaritaville Night on June twenty-eighth this year, and they will be serving margaritas, which is inside of the full liquor array and not within the capacity of the wine and strong beer license that the Stingers have. They are requesting a City Park Special Event to allow the state liquor caterer Baker's Eagle Creek Eatery, LLC, to serve the full array of alcohol. The Community Ed and Recreation Board had met on Friday and also reviewed this application and approved it. It is staff's recommendation that the council approve the City Park Special Event for that June twenty-eighth, two thousand fourteen, activity.
Mr. Mayor? Motion to approve the event? Second. Motion has been made and seconded to approve the event of the City Park Special Event on the On Sale Liquor Licenseholder Baker's Creek Eatery, LLC, Doing Business as the Oaks at Eagle Creek, contingent upon Community Education and Recreation Board Approval. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
DeBleek?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays.
And that carries. Is there any old business? Hearing none, is there any new business? Councilman Anderson, I think that you had some new business that you wanted.
I just, I just wanted to remind the council and the public that there is a retirement party tomorrow for Kevin Madsen, the arena manager who has retired, but he will be there tomorrow afternoon between two and four o'clock, so we look for folks to go out there and wish Kevin well on his well-deserved retirement.
Thank you very much. Any further new business? Finance, announcement of council committee meeting dates, finance, Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance committee will meet Monday, June ninth, at four forty-five. And also, a heads up to the full council, we're going to have a work session at the date of our next finance committee meeting, which will be June twenty-third, and we're going to talk about the capital improvement program and also thoughts and ideas that we may have to give the mayor on the budget. So that will be held here on June twenty-third.
Four forty-five?
I think it'll be four forty-five. We'll let you know for sure.
We'll keep posted on that, right?
Yep, we'll keep posted on that.
Favor, Councilman Amen?
Next week, Wednesday, four forty-five. And that is the eleventh?
Let me correct, Councilman Christiansen?
June tenth, next Tuesday, four forty-five, City Hall.
Community Development, filling in for Councilman Fairley.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, to round out the week, June twelfth, Community Development, four
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
We are adjourned.